Have a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session. Ms. Pullen, second. Mr. Beulen, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present and welcome Mr. Manah.
Thank you.
Kerski, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. Happy United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency, if an evacuation is necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note, all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone turn their cell phones and other electronic devices to silent. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented and amended in 16A? Dr. Littman, second. Mr. Beulen, any discussion?
Be this.
All in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. At this point, I would like to turn this over to Dr. Brown Hall to talk about recognition and board acknowledgements.
Thank you very much, President McClary. So first, building community and celebrating each other is one of the great hallmarks of our district. I'd like to welcome Dr. Bonnie Stafford, Principal of Heim Elementary, to share more about Heim's Celebration for Teacher Appreciation Week. Dr. Stafford? Let's encourage her as she comes up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having Mrs. Newton and me here tonight to talk about Heim Elementary. We always like to brag about our school because we love it. So our showcase video this month is on our Teacher Appreciation Week. Mrs. Newton and I try to recognize and appreciate our teachers all year long, but for Teacher Appreciation Week every year, we kind of choose just like a little fun, silly theme. So this year, our theme was "We Need Some More Staff Like You." And Mrs. Newton and I spent all of our teachers' lunch periods making them some more. So for any some more fans in Buffalo, you know, we only have some more season for part of the year, but Mrs. Newton and I have perfected the air fryer some more. So if anyone wants to, you can enjoy them year round now. So you'll see that on our video. In previous years, we've done, last year, we did like a nacho taco bar. And so our theme last year was queso. Let's taco about how much we appreciate you. So we just tried to do something fun and the teachers just love it. It's just something that puts a smile on their face. We hope you enjoy our showcase video for this month.
Centered around food, enjoyable.
Do you have examples?
Teacher Appreciation Week is an important part of what we do every year as far as recognizing our staff for the wonderful job they do with all of our students. They're preparing our students for their future. They're laying the foundation for their educational career. Teachers are a very key role in a child's life. They're just another significant adult that can serve as a role model, another crucial constant part of a child's life.
And you're going to make two, two-digit numbers and try to come the closest to 100.
They help us learn and teach new things to us. I like my teacher right now. The team makes working a lot more fun. And some of my teachers in the past have done that too.
It's so fun to see the kids getting off the bus with their flowers for their teachers and their cards and just so excited to say thank you to them for everything that they do. They're their caregiver, their educator, the person that takes care of them and knows them the best. They're doing Band-Aids. They do everything for them all day. It is not a job that starts at eight in the morning and ends at 2:30 in the afternoon. It is the most important job in the entire world because you can change a kid's life every single day that they walk through your door.
They help you learn all the different things that you need to know as a student. My teachers are always really funny. I love school.
There's no way we could do what we do without our staff. And Mrs. Newton and I recognize that every day. The word Heim actually means home. And for a lot of our staff and our students, it is home to them. And we really are Heim family. We care about each other deeply and we're always there to support each other.
Teamwork, teamwork. Got it?
I think that's what our parents and all of our stakeholders are so proud of here at Williamsville is that we know we have amazing teachers. And we're so fortunate to have such excellent staff here working with our kids every day. And we just want them to know that they're so important and we can't even imagine without them here.
Awesome. Thank you, Principal Dr. Stafford and Mrs. Newton. So next, for nearly a decade, Forest Elementary has honored the life and legacy of a former student with an annual fund run and fundraiser for cancer research. I'd like to welcome Principal Keith Wing, who's Principal of Forest Elementary, and Assistant Principal Claire LaCotta to share more about the impact of Run Forest Run.
Thank you for inviting us up here tonight. One of the things that Mrs. LaCotta, Michael and I and our school community value and really cherish the most is our relationship that we have with our families and school community. And you're going to see that highlighted tonight in this video where we highlight our annual Run Forest Run where we have hundreds of members from our school community involved. And it's a truly great event. So I hope you This is our ninth annual Run Forest Run 5K. Originally, this 5K was started as a fundraiser for our PTA. But as the race began to evolve, we changed it into more of a fundraiser for organizations that supported our community. And after the tragic loss of one of our students several years ago, we really repositioned that race to be a race for the Punt Foundation, who was very supportive during that time. Really, this race is probably the capstone of all of our activities. It's a great community event. We had as many as about 1,200 runners out at different times. And the community members would just come by to enjoy the experience.
See so many of the same faces every year, not to mention, you know, what this means, what this means to the PTA to be able to donate funds, proceeds to the Punt Foundation, which is an amazing collaborative in itself. It means so much to our community to get our kids outside and active and cheering for their family and friends when they cross the finish line. It's something that really sticks with you every year.
And PTA has been instrumental in making sure we're able to do this every year. They work so hard and so diligently every year to prepare. There's a lot of work that goes behind this. So we're grateful to everything they do. Our relationship with our school community is everything. And we are so lucky to have developed such a nice relationship. And we are, we're grateful to be able to put this race on every year.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Next, tonight, we have a very special recognition for one of our athletic programs. I'd like to welcome Julie Arnold, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director of North High School, who will share more about the Spartan hockey team's impact.
Good evening and thank you for having us here tonight. We greatly appreciate your support of all of our athletic teams here in Williamsville. Tonight, we do have a special recognition for our boys' ice hockey team from this past winter. They were awarded the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Community Service Challenge Award. So tonight, we have gentleman, you want to come up? Junior Matt White, Senior Brendan McDermott, Senior Evan Pryor, and sophomore Eric Cunningham, joined by coaches Dylan Moscato, Jake Rosen, John Burns, and a very special individual, Amy, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah Oik. She is, she's an integral part in helping our fundraising efforts and our acknowledgement of crisis services mission every single year with the teddy bear toss that the boys' ice hockey team does. So tonight, I would like to introduce Todd Nelson, Assistant Director from the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. Todd, yours, yours. Thank you.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here in front of you tonight to recognize your boys' ice hockey team at Williamsville North. My name is Todd Nelson. I am the Assistant Director, just finishing up my 15th year here with the association. Our executive director, Dr. Robert Zayas, is famous for saying, and I use this quote all the time, that we do not prepare our student athletes for the next level of competition. We prepare them for the next level of life. And this award that you are going to be receiving tonight exemplifies that. We started this community service challenge a few years ago. We had over 173 entries for the winter season. We recognize a project each season. And the, all the entries are examined and the award winner is picked by our Student Athlete Advisory Committee. The Student Athlete Advisory Committee is a representation of all 11 sections. There's two representatives, one male, one female, one junior and senior. And then they meet on a regular basis and we really get the input from the student athletes. So the student athletes are the ones that have selected your team to be the winter recipient of this community service challenge. And I'm not really surprised that they picked this team and their project. Because since the inception of the Student Athlete Advisory Committee, their main focus has been on mental health and the mental health of all students. We have a mental health week at the beginning of May. Our Student Athlete Advisory Committee is led by our Assistant Director Kristin Jaden. I give her a ton of credit for leading that group. But that has been their main focus since they've come into existence, is the mental health of our student athletes. And they were no more valuable than during the pandemic crisis that we had. So I know that your team raised over $6,000 for other crisis service. But in my mind, the amount of money is not the most important thing. The important thing is these young men, and along with Williamsville East, because they were in conjunction with them during the teddy bear game, took it upon themselves to give back to their community. And that's what it's about. And I commend you, gentlemen. I commend you, coaches, and Julie, your leadership and your work, you know, for putting this together. So you're very fortunate here. I have the pleasure of traveling all across the state. And I can tell you, Williamsville School District is one of the top school districts in the, in the state. And you have excellent, three excellent high schools that are both successful on the field. But more importantly, they're successful in the classroom and they're successful about becoming better community members once they leave here. So I am pleased to present this to your Williamsville North Boys' Ice Hockey Team, the Winter Community
We are going to pause for pictures over here also with myself, Board President, coaches. If someone can just explain to us what the challenge, right, what it is, and then one of our students can explain exactly what you guys did.
So we raised money for crisis services. And we did that by getting both teams together and raising enough money for the teddy bear toss game. So after the first goal, everyone throws teddy bears on the ice. And so we kind of got both schools to work together. And it's really cool. Raised a lot of money.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Great job. We'll move over here. We'll be under the direction of Nick Filipowski momentarily All right, that's what we need to do here.
I took off my, I'm cold in here, but today it's toasty.
And last but not least, New York State School Boards Association, NISBA, recognition program is designed to acknowledge those school board members who strive to continually expand their governance knowledge and skills. So at this time, the New York State School Boards Association awards their Board Achievement Award to our own, our very own, Kristo Kazmeric Bogner. So I'll turn it back over to you, President McClary.
Thank you. Are there any board acknowledgements?
I'll go first.
I'm sure.
All right. Ms. Blackinger?
I had the honor and privilege of attending the Williamsville East Award Ceremony last night. And there was over 300 awards given to 149 students. And the Williamsville Education Foundation presented two awards to two students. And we'll also be presenting awards to Williamsville South Award Ceremony on 6-1 and Williamsville North 6-7.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Galia?
I had two acknowledgements. First, I'd like to acknowledge the community for the school board budget elections. We had the, I think, a record number. Correct? Of, or close to it. People coming out to vote. And it's extremely important and shows that the community cares. And that's the first step in education. If the community has a buy-in and comes out to vote and shows, you know, their dedication to the budget, you know, it helps the district. So, you know, I want to commend the community for that. And then number two, I was lucky enough to have my son involved in this too. He's on Maple West Student Council. And recently, they were able to install an inclusive playground set at Maple West. And like to me, when I went and visited as they were working on it and to see all the, the fourth graders working on and helping the little things and seeing all the parents involved and the teachers and administration there, building something that we are all striving for. And when we talk about DEI, there's the perfect example of inclusive playset.
Absolutely.
And when they presented it to the students, it brought tears to my eyes to see all of them cheering. And when, you know, the handicapped students came up and got to use it and the kids jumping for joy, some doing the gritty and all that for the kids, that's what it's about. And, you know, when we talk about inclusion, there's your perfect example. So I want to commend Maple West for, for what they did. That's, you know, one of the first steps into what we have to do here in Williamsville.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Littman?
I want to echo Mr. Viskalga's points. And I want to again welcome our board members who are reelected and my colleague, Mr. Manah. But the other thing is, as you stated, Williamsville sees a great value in the education of our students and the community working together to do that. But I also wanted to acknowledge the large number of candidates we had and who spent most of Tuesday Election Day on their feet, talking to people in the community and talking to each other about ideas and strategies that will help move our educational system forward. And for those of us who've been in education for longer than many of you have been born, it's always nice to see people talking about the importance of making an educational system work for all students.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Welcome.
All right. Thank you. At this time, I call on Ms. Pullen to review our public expression format.
Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per policy 1510, the board will allow up to 30 minutes for public comment. This is a time when we invite members of the school community to share ideas, opinions, and concerns with us. While we are here to listen carefully, we take your concerns seriously. Public comment is not designed as a part of, to be discussion. Therefore, please know that we will not be responding tonight. Instead, you will receive a response by email after our meeting. Because we want to maintain mutual respect and civility, please ensure that comments are delivered in a respectful manner to the board directly. Also, under state and federal privacy laws, we are unable to entertain any comments related to employee personnel information or any topic that may disclose information about a particular student. On these matters, we ask that you go through appropriate administrative channels. Please note that individuals are required to sign up prior to our meeting. And each speaker is allotted three minutes for comments. You'll be signaled at two and a half minutes with these paddles here. Thank you, Manah. And you will have, and then at three minutes, you'll be signaled to complete the thought that you have started at that time. Thank you very much. And after I call your name, please step to the podium, state your name for us again. Our first speaker tonight is
Good evening. It was nice to see so many positive things that are going on in Williamsville as a parent and taxpayer here. I am hoping that by having the opportunity to speak to all of you today, that we can also work to continue to improve things in Williamsville. In 2016, we moved to Williamsville School District. It was my idea. My husband didn't want to move. He loves the city of Buffalo. I told him we had to do it for the kids. Both of my children have IEPs. There's a long history to tell, but in summary, Williamsville was the best choice by far. And I was tired. So very, very, very tired. And the advocacy never stops when you have kids with special needs. And so much has been truly great for my kids since we moved, truly. So when little things didn't work out once we were here, I chose to let it go. When I was told there was no direct consultant teacher services at Transit Middle for my daughter in fifth grade, even though it was on her IEP, I let it go. And she received resource room. When I was told that if my daughter wanted to sing in chorus, she could simply not be in resource room. We would have to choose between music and all its enrichment versus what she needed academically, resource room. I let it go. When my son, who's diagnosed with autism, could still not read after four years at Maple East Elementary, I let it go. When my son did not receive speech for almost an entire school year, to my shame, I let it go. But now I am here in front of the school board. Because it came to my attention in February of this year, there's no appropriate programming for my son at the high school level. Sean is in seventh grade at a wonderful program at Heim Middle. It's wonderful. And not because the district mandated it. It exists because the leadership and the staff at Heim Middle followed his IEP, developed the programming that he needed, and this really throws you a yellow paddle. Okay. To enhance his positive behavior and the learning beyond his IEP, I am so grateful. These people deserve raises, all of them. But it looks like my son's luck is running out. Recently, a large group of concerned parents that I'm a part of became aware of the fact that at the SEPSA Roundtable with Special Education Administration, the meeting was conducted without the presence of the district's special education coordinator or the assistant superintendent for special education. These meetings only happen a few times a year. There are many serious matters to be discussed. The absence of leadership is viewed as a lack of commitment to work with parents and their representatives.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us today.
Hi. My name's Angelica Martino. My son's a student, sorry, I'm going to talk real fast. My son's a student at Mill presently receiving home instruction. I'm currently in the process of finding a way to find him education for next year. Currently, Williamsville does not have a classroom or program that will have services to ensure his success while also providing significant learning and meaningful benefit, two concepts that have been clarified in past court cases when clarifying idea. I have an option of choosing a BOSI's placement that will provide support for his behavior, yet this placement will restrict his access to interact with typical peers. And because he succeeds in advanced math, this placement will not provide significant learning nor a meaningful benefit to him. Why do parents have to make the choice between supporting their child's disability and providing a meaningful education? It's the responsibility of this district to provide a free and appropriate education. We need to provide more special education programs and creative classroom dynamics so that the students in Williamsville can receive their education in the least restrictive environment. We need to stop the no culture of telling parents why they can't be supported and have a more collaborative culture with creative solutions because that's what the students need. We need to stop telling parents that providing behavior texts in the classroom and creating, and creating smaller classroom sizes is more restrictive than moving children to self-contained buildings with no opportunities for inclusion because that is being done. So looking at the classrooms and programs within the district and trying to piecemeal together an education, I couldn't help but wonder what other districts are doing. One thing I noticed, these districts, these districts noticed a problem and created a solution. They didn't wait for other districts to create a program in hopes of cross-contracting. They didn't tell families their children had to wait on BOSI's waitlist. They didn't tell their parents, sorry, there's no cohort to create a program, or sorry, we don't have the physical classroom space. They didn't tell their families all of these things that Williamsville has been telling their families in our district. They put their students first, created individualized education to meet their students' needs because they understood that education is not a one-size-fits-all concept. So, a great program, New York City, they have a NEST program, it's called. It was adopted, it's a evidence-based program created in 2003, 10 years after. created in 2003. Ten years after 2013, they published two books so that other districts can actually adopt the program. It contains every classroom along the entire continuum in an inclusive setting. It is amazing what they have down there. They have 811s, they have ICT classrooms. So it's not just, sorry, your kid does not have a cohort or other kids that have your needs. It's, this is what we can do to help your child. Coming back here, Canton, big picture program. It's a project-based inclusive CT classrooms offered. That program was developed in September 2018 based on the fact that they had decreasing graduation rates. That program is phenomenal. They don't co-contract, and I don't blame them. Why can't we create programs for our students? Sweet Home also has a big picture program. It's the high school setting. That was formed in 2020. Why are we waiting? Other things. I would like to know about the audit. What indicators, what programs are being used for this audit? Is it a New York State assessment that we're doing? What kind of things are we using to evaluate our success and our educational program here in Williamsville?
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tracy Peterson.
Hello, I'm Tracy Peterson. I'm going to be much shorter than these ladies. I just typed it up. I'm speaking not only on behalf of myself, but of numerous of my special ed needs parents and friends. We all would like to continue to reiterate the need for a full-time certified behavior analyst and then full-time certified behavior text in the special education classrooms. I will again reiterate that there are several children in the elementary, middle, and high school self-contained classrooms or other special ed programs that their needs are not being met. Behaviors are communication. Let that sink in. Behaviors are still communication. If the teacher and these children have had, if the teacher and these children had been given access to the contracted certified behavior analyst, that's $240,000 that's been budgeted, many of their behaviors could have been properly addressed and mitigated. But according to the parents and the teachers, they were or are not aware of this resource. Why? Is this contractor, if this contractor is in the budget, then why aren't all the special ed teachers aware of this resource? Further, there is a lot of turnover with the aides in the special ed classrooms and specifically in the self-contained classes. We know that these aides are not trained and are essentially just a warm body that is placed based on the child's I E P. Again, hiring aides without training them properly to effectively handle specific needs is not only ludicrous, but detrimental to the child and does not set the child up for success. If the special ed teachers do not have the proper resources and trained aides, then they cannot effectively teach. And isn't that the whole point of education, is to teach all children? This is not a new thing. This has been ongoing. Changes need to be made. And while I realize there is an audit that should be ending soon, this should not be used to not take action to get a full-time district certified behavior analyst and certified text by the fall semester this year, 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. And that concludes our public expression for today.
Thank you, Ms. Pullen. Item number five, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, six personnel, seven business, and eight special needs and student activities as presented. Dr. Singh, second. Ms. Kazmarak Bogner, any discussion? Yes, Dr. Littman?
No, just as a comment, because part of this is a business aspect where we look at bids. And when we think about the cost of things, all the bids this year seem to be 10% to 12% higher than previous bids. So again, the cost of every thing at home and in a school district continues to go up.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to Mr. Chris McDuffie, the Mill Middle School Principal.
McDuffie?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. McLeary. And good evening. First, I would like to thank Dr. Brown Hall and the Board of Education for the opportunity to serve as the principal of Mill Middle School. Mill is an amazing school with an extraordinary staff and students, and to be appointed as the principal of Mill Middle is truly humbling. I look forward to work with all members of the Mill School community to provide our students with the best possible educational experience. Thank you for your support. Have a great evening.
To our session, please.
I do want to take a moment and acknowledge Mr. Stephen McDuffie, also one of the most winningest coaches in Buffalo history, the brother of Chris McDuffie. So we're honored to have you here tonight, too, Mr. McDuffie.[1165.01][1165.01](applause)
Thank you. At this point, I would like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Patricia Haas, North High School, for 43 years of service.
Wow.
Yeah. Donna Kaush, Mill Middle School, for 24 years of service. Linda Shelton, Casey Middle, for 29 years of service. And Karen Wilcox, Mill Middle, for 15 years of, congratulations to all.[1203.41][1203.41](applause) Item number nine, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 4th meeting? Kazmarak Bogner, second. Mr. Buellin, are there any corrections? All in favor? Thank you. Opposed?
Abstentions, please.
Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries 801. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the May 18th meeting? Mr. Biskalia, second. Ms. Pullen, any corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries 602. No. Seven, zero, two. Thank you. Under the President's report, would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the results of the annual district vote held on May 16th as presented? Dr. Littman, second. Dr. Singh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank Conversations with the Board of Education and Superintendent for Faculty and Staff was held on May 3rd at East High School in the Commons. The next school building visit will be on June 7th at Dodge Elementary and District Office. Board members attending are Ms. Blackinger, Ms. Pullen, Ms. Kazmarak Bogner, and Dr. Littman. Anyone else? Thank you. The Policy 6000 Series Committee will need to be rescheduled from the April date. Mrs. Carey will be reaching out to the committee members to sort out when another date is available. And at this point, we'd like to talk about Board of Education representatives at the high school graduations. The North High School graduation is Saturday, June 24th at the North Athletic Fields, 10:00 a.m. Rain date, Sunday, June 29th at 10 a.m. Board representatives are Ms. Blackinger and Dr. Littman.
I will also be at North at some point.
Thank you. The East High School will be Saturday, June 24th at the East High School Athletic Fields at 9 a.m. The rain date is Sunday, June 25th at 9 a.m. Board representatives attending the East graduation are Mr. Biskalia, Dr. Singh, and Mr. Buellin. Any others? Okay. The South High School will be Saturday, June 24th at South High School at 6 p.m. Board representatives are Ms. Pullen and Ms. Kazmarak Bogner. Anyone else for South?
I'd go.
Dr. Littman?
Amen.
That's it. Thank you very much. Upcoming events and meetings for County Association of School Boards and the New York State School Board Association information are listed in Board Docs. Does anyone have anything to report related to either ECA SB or NISBA? Thank you. I now turn it back to Dr. Brown Hall for your community update.
President McLeary, thank you very much. A lot going on, a lot going on. Oh, I thought it was off. There we go. Budget vote and Board of Education elections, we want to thank the Williamsville community for passing the 2324 school budget. It means a lot so that we can continue our educational programming in the district. We also want to congratulate Mr. Mike Biskalia, who was the number one vote getter on last Tuesday evening, Board Member Christo Kazmarak Bogner, Ms. Carrie Spicer, who will be assuming her three-year term on July 1, and Mr. Mark Manor, who has joined us this evening. So congratulations to all of the Board of Education winners. Thank you very much for your service and the service you're about to embark upon. Thank you very much. Regents exams. So we wanted to make sure we posted the Regents exams on the district website and that we had them listed here in Board Docs during the community update so parents can use this as a reference. Although the Regents exams are there, keep in mind, there is one that begins on Thursday, June 1st, it's the U.S. History and Government exam. And we ask parents and caregivers to please check with your schools and teachers for district and class exams and final projects. So this list is not exhaustive.
Dr. Brown Hall, might be a good idea to add the times?
Okay, we can do that. You know, what's AM and what's PM? Got it. Thank you very much. I believe on the, on the website, I believe we have it there, on this, because people do, they print these off. Yeah. Thank you very much for that. Senior memory walk. So many of you remember, we spoke about this. This is where our high school seniors will actually be walking through the halls of their elementary schools in a parade-like fashion, in their caps and gowns, so that they can be, experimental teachers can see them in their caps and gowns. Now, students must sign up with their high school to participate, and they must ride the bus we provide to their former elementary schools. They are not allowed to drive to their elementary schools. Each memory walk will be recorded and shared through district and school newsletters and social media channels so that parents will have access to that. And we have sent invitations, this elementary schools have, they've sent invitations to the retired teachers so that they are able to return to their elementary schools and see some of their former students. So if they retired over the last 10 years, they're able to come back and see their former elementary students Summer school information. We wanted to make sure we put the summer school information in the community update. We have the dates for the elementary and middle summer school, which will be taking place at Casey Middle School. We have the high school summer school, which will be taking place at Williamsville North. And the special education summer school will be taking place at Mill Middle School. The principals for those summer school programs are Mr. Charlie Smilnic and Andrew Bowen for elementary and middle. For high school, Courtney Charleston Smith and Assistant Principal Nick Suhanna. And for the special education program, the principal is Kate Windling. So their email addresses and phone numbers are listed here. If you have any questions about summer school or summer school programming, please reach out to the appropriate principal or assistant principal for that program. Special education programming. I want to say first and foremost, we've had many parents come to speak to the Board of Education, whether it be at the community forum, whether it be at the budget hearing, and even on tonight. I want to assure the parents that come to speak to the board, we hear you. We truly, truly do hear you. I know a lot of times when parents leave a community forum, a budget hearing, it'd be optimum, right? Everyone wants some sort of reaction or some sort of, just to see that change is happening or that we hear you or that change is taking place. And I'm here tonight to tell you that yes, we do hear you, and we are looking into many different things in the district. And what we are definitely waiting on is to get the results of the review. It's not an audit, it's a review. And we're looking so that we are comparing, and the consultants are comparing what we offer in Williamsville to not only best practices, but what's offered across the state in like-sized and similar districts. That's what's important. When this consultant contract was approved for the review, there's a three-page document in Board Docs that details everything that the consultants are going through. So when we heard the, you know, concerns and things that were brought to the board, we met, myself, Assistant Superintendent Skanzuzo, we met in the fall of 2022 with the consultants to really outline all the areas we need them to look at. Then we discussed what the contract would look, look like. They began this work Then we discussed what the contract would look, look like. They began this work in January, and they told us it would take six months to do a deep dive into your special ed programming in the district. After that time, we will have recommendations. They will highlight the best practices and what we should have in the district our size. And we said, thank you very much. We'll take that information, and then we will begin to action plan from that. And we are going to do that, and we've asked to form a committee to help do that work, a special education parent advisory committee slash special education advisory committee. There are parents who are going to be on that committee. Ms. Becker, I believe you're one of them. There are teachers who are going to be on that committee. There are administrators, you know, principals that house our special education programs that will be on that committee, so that we take that report from the consultants, and we begin to actualize what that looks like in Williamsville, understanding what some of our limitations may be, and understanding that there is great programming that is offered outside of the district that sometimes students will have to access. I go back to my years in Buffalo. Buffalo, we had School 84, which was a special program for medically fragile students. And students came from districts all around the region to attend that program. School districts can't house individual programs like that, right? Number one, it's cost prohibitive, and the specialists are at School 84. So we, as a district, have to realize when it's feasible and when it's in the best interest of a child to seek another program outside of the school district. And I know that's not what parents want to hear sometimes. They want their kids to attend school in their home district where their friends go. I get that. But we have to do, as I'm sure you want, to do what's in the best interest of your child. And so we have to work together. We have to partner to make sure that is taking place. And so that's why we're going to form the committee to look at the results from the review, to figure out how we actualize what's in that review for the best interest of all Williamsville students. Importance of specialized programs and best programming for students, I just spoke about that. And we want to make sure that we're building trust and continuing partnerships with parents. I know if anyone were to last, were to watch the last couple of Board of Education meetings or the budget hearing or the community forum, they would think that special education is just a mess in the district. Now, everything we do, every school district should be in a constant state of improvement, right? Always in a constant state of improvement. We take what we do, and we always look to improve it. When we know better, we do better. And that's how we build trust, and that's how we continue our partnerships. So we will take the review. What we know better, we will do better. And we will be in a constant state of improvement in the area of special education and many areas, right? Our work is never done. We're never at the finish line. We can always get better. And special education is one of those areas. So I want to let you all know, you are being heard, and we will actualize. Myself, Assistant Superintendent Skanzuzo, we have had many conversations, and that's why we talked about developing the advisory council, so we can actualize this work and bring stakeholders on, so that we are making the decisions. And there are going to be some tough discussions and conversations we have, because there are some limitations in the district, right? But I don't want anyone watching our meetings or our community forums thinking that our teachers aren't doing the best they can every day. Our teachers, our administrators, our directors, they're working hard and doing the best for our students. We are having great special education experiences in the district. I want to stress that, so people know, right? And the areas where we may need to improve, we will improve. You have my word on that. So thank you very much for listening to that whole special education soliloquy, but it's important that I stated that tonight. The speaker series for 2324, that will continue. And so I've asked the community to provide input on what the speaker series topics can be. I will review these with the PTSA Council, because that's who we partner with, and then we will narrow them down. So some of the ideas that came in, we're dealing with the pre-adolescent, connecting with my middle-school-age student. I will definitely be attending that one. What to do when your child is struggling in school? Technology concerns, cybersecurity, and how to use technology to foster learning at home, and student internet safety. Very, very important. And we'll be partnering with the U.S. Secret Service. It was set up by one of our PTSA Council presidents to work with the Secret Service on that. And then what teachers wish parents knew, insight into a student's school day. Now, our first speaker series, we are partnering with SEPSA, the Special Education PTSA, and we're partnering with SEPSA and UB to do a special speaker series on neurodiversity. And that will be, we have two dates, one in September, one in October, so we're working with UB to finalize that date. Again, going back to when we know better, we do better. So we do get a list of all of the special months, right? Like, we know it's Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, right? One of my former colleagues and mentors said, the minute you start recognizing months and special days, you're gonna slip up and miss something. So I would advise you not do that. Well, that's not how I operate. I think we acknowledge them, and if we miss something, we acknowledge that and apologize for it. So I did receive an email explaining that we missed Jewish American Heritage Month, which is the month of May. So I apologize to our Jewish community for missing that, and we will make up for that on the weekly updates. And that's the community update for May 23, 2023. Any questions, Board members? Dr. Littman?
Just on the speaker series, I mean, you mentioned technology issues. You know, we're seeing more and more on the impact of social media on young people's behavior, the mental health and all of that. So I don't know if we could integrate that somehow along the way. Also, you know, the mental health picture, you know, is always valuable.
Absolutely. And what it's doing to our young people, how our young people are holding themselves up to this, what they're seeing on social media, thinking that they have to be that perfect of what's on social media, that's really causing a lot of trauma to our youngsters. So that point also, thank you, Dr. Littman.
And the Wall Street Journal this week had, last week, had an article about analyzing, mental health professionals analyze TikTok and the algorithm they use, which, you know, directed for many young people, I guess I would say, very negative.
Oh, yeah.
Type directions. And, you know, we need to combat that any way we can.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Biskalia?
U.S. history exam, that's the new framework one, correct?
Yes.
Why, that's why it's the June 1, okay. No, I know that. I just, I kind of wanted to say that, so parents in the community knew. It's, that's why it's a little earlier than.
Glad you brought that up, because parents may ask, why is it that two weeks earlier? You're, you're very right. Thank you very much for that.
I think as they get in, it'll be back to Regents Week, but just so parents understand that.
Right.
Probably. You're right.
So we are up to date as of this moment, right? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the district logo as presented? Dr. Singh? Second. Mr. Manna? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Under number 12 Finance, we will be approving agenda items 12A through 12D. A motion to approve items 12A, lease agreements for summer athletic camps, 12B, budget transfer amounts, 12C, approve the bond anticipation note paydown, and 12D, tax settlement and transfer amount from tax reserves as presented. Ms. Blackinger? Second. Mr. Manna? Any discussion? Dr. Littman?
Yeah, I just wanted to make mention of the fact that under seat approving bond anticipation or ban note paydown, that we're using district funds. And maybe Mr. Matoski could talk better about this, but, you know, the impact that paying off our debts using our district funds has on the total budget and future, future budgeting, right?
Certainly. We're in, again, this is another COVID impact year. This is the last year going back to our ESER and ARP funding, that we really had the opportunity to use those funds. And so that meant we saved some of our general fund dollars. So that makes it really leveraging those dollars in the most positive aspect we can, which is to use it to pay down our ban. So this is for the current security improvement project. We had $24 million outstanding as of last June. So this is going to do a paydown that is going to really bring our debt down, and it becomes significantly important for future capital projects. If you look at what the interest savings were, I'm calculating that you're probably saving here, and, and I'm saying probably because the rates have gone up almost every single month, at least by $5.2 million in interest savings. And that would be an accumulated amount that would be over a 15-year borrowing term. But the rates, as I know, are going up substantially, so that really number would only increase in the future.
My only question is, if we don't use that 17 million to pay down the bond, can it be in our regular budget? Or do we have to spend that money?
We, in this case, you would want to expend the money for that purpose. The other option would have been to put those into, say, our capital reserve. But this is going to actually reduce future taxpayer interest payments. So it really is more beneficial to do it in this manner than to have an outstanding debt that you're paying. And once you issue the debt, in most cases, it's non-callable, at least for the first period of time, which is usually about 10 years. So you're really locked into your interest rate payments over that period of time. So that's why this is really a more cost-effective use of those funds.
Because I think we're paying 3% interest on these bonds, right? And we're getting 4% on bonds.
Yeah, but at the same time, this is a ban, so it's renewable. So we just reborrowed monies this today. It was sold on the market. 3.86% was for $6.2 million. If we would have borrowed more, it's likely that percentage would have been higher. So the investment amounts are now not necessarily positive if you were to invest in CDs, which is what we do. So, and, and again, our investment strategy is based on New York State municipal law for school districts. We really can only invest in either certificate deposits, treasury notes, or in savings accounts, or repurchase agreements. And repurchase agreements is not something I would recommend, and treasury notes are not exactly, they're, they're not as secured as, even though they say treasury in it, as a CD.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. So, under the motion, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Under liaison reports, the list of remaining assignments and meeting dates are in Board Docs. Does anyone have anything to report under liaison assignments? There are no legislative matters to discuss. Item 15, I will turn it back over to Dr. Brown Hall, Dr. Baylen, or and/or Mr. Mutica to discuss physical education.
Thank you very much, President McCleary. Health and wellness go hand in hand. Whether it's at the elementary, middle, or high school level, our teachers work to provide students with the tools necessary to establish lifelong healthy habits. Tonight, we welcome Mr. Chris Mutica, the district's Director of Health and Physical Education and Athletics, to provide an overview.
Thank you, Dr. Brown Hall. When I first got here, I thought the crowd was here for the phys ed curriculum, but I guess they weren't.
They were not running.
Again, thank you, Dr. Brown Hall, Dr. Baylen, our leadership team, along with our Board of Education for having me here tonight to represent our phys ed staff. Throughout the past two years, the Williamsville phys ed staff has been preparing for the implementation of the New York State learning standards. Our district, along with every district in New York, has been granted or guided by New York State to blend current lessons and activities with new lessons to create anchor standards, strands, and outcomes that will be fully implemented during the 2324 school year. Physical education learning standards express what a student should know and be able to demonstrate in classes for K to 4, 5 to 8, and 9 to 12. The emphasis in physical education is to ensure a high level of differentiation and student choice, and ensure that all students are engaged, interact with others, are challenged, and learn, most importantly, to have fun. These six standards briefly are: standard one demonstrates competency in a variety of motor skills and movement patterns; standard two, apply the knowledge of concepts, principles, performance, strategies, and tactics related to movement and performance; standard three, demonstrate the knowledge of skills to achieve and maintain a healthy lifestyle; standard four exhibits responsible personal and social behavior that respects oneself and others; standard five, recognize the value of physical activity for overall wellness, enjoyment, challenge, and self-expression; and standard six, community resources to be able to know where to go in your community to have a physical, physical and healthy lifestyle. I'd now like to share a very brief video that shows our teachers and students in action. Thanks to Nick Filipowski and Dave Morales for helping put this together, and thank you to our teachers and principals for the exemplary building programs.
Elementary PE is about learning fundamental movement skills such as locomotor skills and fitness skills, and then we try and incorporate other skills outside of that. We try and make it as fun as possible for the kids, so that they enjoy fitness and movement as much as possible, and we try and do things that they can do for the rest of their lives.
You want to push that water back? Yes. Excellent.
They, they're like a sponge. They absorb everything that we teach them, and then they put it hopefully into their own lives while they're at home. Some of them haven't had life experience the same way as others, so when they put on a life jacket, or they learn how to make a meal with different kinds of foods that maybe they've never tried before.
And how about strawberries?
Blue!
Blue! Thank you.
That is really fun to see when they try and explore different things, and hopefully that reverts to home, and they do different things at home, too.
Throughout our year, we do a lot of different activities in our physical education classes. We use our turf, we use the track, we use the pool, we have a fitness room, we use our awesome gym, to really teach the kids about life sports, team sports, cooperative games, teamwork, and get them to have fun and learn and move. And we're big about movement, learn to move as much as they can. A lot of our kids, we encourage them to participate in our intramural and extramural program, meaning it's before school. Typically for us, they come in, play with their peers, get more activity time, game time, learn about other sport. So throughout our classes, we tend to do a lot of different units, even like year to year, we don't really do the same thing or same set of units twice, so really try to get to those kids who might not think physical education is their favorite class, but really try to show them there's some way they can move and be healthy, and find something that they love to do. That's really why we try to always do a variety of activities. I'm seeing that lightbulb moment, or just them find what they love to do, or they come back from high school and tell you, hey, Ms. T, I joined this team, or I'm doing this club. It is really cool to see that we help be a part of that, whether it was intramurals or extramurals, just, you know, teaching them about that unit in class for a couple weeks or a couple of classes, and just seeing them find what they love to do is our biggest thing here.
At the high school level, we're really trying to expose them to a variety of different activities, and teaching the importance of lifelong fitness, not only for physical fitness, but for mental health as well, and the benefits that physical activity provides for mental health as well as physical health. We try to expose them to a variety of different activities, and really try to get them to understand the importance of fitness, not only while they're here in high school, but for our lifelong health and wellness.
Make a play, Johnny!
Really rewarding for us as phys ed teachers to see when they find an activity that they can really enjoy and get some enjoyment out of it, and maybe it kind of, like you said, clicks for them. And what's really special is when the kids come back after they graduate, and they come back and visit, and we run into them in the community, and they really let us know, you know, hey, man, that was really, I'm really happy you taught us this skill, because this is what I'm doing now. I'm really into the gym, or I'm really into this activity, or frisbee golf, or whatever it may be. That's really rewarding for us as well.
So thank you for giving us a little forum to display what we do, and phys ed is ever-evolving, ever-changing, and we have 40 phys ed teachers that do a wonderful job throughout our 13 buildings, and I'm very proud of them. And we try to incorporate the interests of kids each and every day, whether it be swimming in our pools, rollerblading, archery, orienteering, frisbee golf, lawn games, we're ever-evolving, and thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Director.
Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 16A as presented? Ms. Pullen? Second? Mr. Buellin? Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries unanimously. At this time, are there any board questions or comments regarding the repair reserve request as listed in Board Docs? Now, we will open the hearing up to community members at this time. Are there any comments or questions from the community regarding the repair reserve? All right. Thank you. We will be approving Agenda Items 17B and 17C in regard to the repair reserve. May I have a motion to approve Items 17B, repair reserve work, and 17C, the awarding of the repair reserve bid as presented? Ms. Blackinger? Second? Mr. Buellin? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We received the annual district energy report. Are there any questions or comments from the board for Mr. Maturski? All right. There are no special needs and student activities matters to discuss. Item 19, does anyone have any item to discuss under Committee of the Whole? In terms of correspondence, we received correspondence from the Seneca Nation and topics regarding special education and ELL. Our next board meeting is June 13th. Is there a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Ms. Pullen? Mr. Buellin? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you and good evening.